The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everybody. Mike is on, for sure. Reports of the committees, student representatives. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Monroe Board of Education. I hope you're having a marvelous Monday. Massey Theater will be hosting their rendition of the production Footloose in the Massey Auditorium this Thursday, March 21st, and this Saturday, March 23rd. Tickets are available for sale online now and help support the Drama Department. Ninth and 10th grade students have successfully completed their PSAT exams during the past weeks. Now, this Thursday, the junior class will be taking their in-school digital SAT exam. Good luck to all our Massey test takers. Finally, the sophomore ring dance will be this Friday at Stone Barn. Have fun to all those attending.
The Massey Music Department ran Music and Meatballs, their signature fundraising event, on Saturday, March 9th. This was the first time in several years that the event was run, and it was a resounding success. The cafeteria was packed as guests enjoyed meals from Dave's Planet Pizza and listened to our musicians' beautiful tunes. Congratulations to the Music Department. Furthermore, the annual post-prom fashion show is now in the works. The PTC is looking for applicants and donations to benefit this amazing event. The show will be held on Wednesday, April 3rd, and all proceeds will go towards the post-prom event on the evening of May 31st. Please be sure to support. On another note, as states and SWCs recently came to a close for our winter sports, spring sports are now underway and will soon be in full swing. Sports like girls golf, tennis, softball, track, and more will soon have tryouts and begin practicing for their season. Good luck to our athletes.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Do any board members have any committee reports? No?
We'll bring up the policy tonight. We'll bring those policies at our next meeting.
Okay, policy met tonight. And, Sheila, I know Health and Safety Committee met on the 14th. I'm sorry I couldn't make that, but I did look at the agenda afterwards. It seems like everything is running smoothly. Drills are being done.
Yep, drills are being done. We had a great after-action review. Julia shared what had transpired at Jacquey Hallow with the smoke or the smell of burning up in the library and how the team worked together. Julia shared that out, which was great. And it's also something for us to think about, you know, as we look at all of our schools and how important those drills are.
Absolutely. And I'll touch base with you, too. I have some feedback on the bomb threat response, too, that I looked at.
Great. Thanks.
Report of the chairman, acknowledgement of donations. Joe?
Yes, we have two donations to recognize tonight. First one is I want to thank Dave Wolfe, who donated a television to Jacquey Hallow. The television will be used to display announcements in the cafeteria there. And then also, I'd like to thank the Monroe Rotary Club, which Dennis is a founding member, I believe, for their donation of books to the classroom libraries of each of our third-grade classrooms. Historically, the Rotary Club donates dictionaries to the third graders. But this year, working with Kim Nelly and our elementary principals, Rotary donated a collection of books that we place in each classroom's library. So, really cool. We're going to be bringing those books to the elementary schools in a couple of weeks.
So, thank you, David Wolfe and Monroe Rotary. Thank you very much for those. Move to the consent agenda. Any questions on the minutes? Any questions on the warrants or the budget transfers? Go ahead, Dennis.
I see all the writing.
I see him cringing.
I don't know whether to have these in order, but strap yourself in, bud. The warrants, 30724, legal matters, 25 day. That's within budget, correct?
Do you have a page number?
No, that would be too helpful. 7101. 30724, yeah. My iPad just died, of course.
So, it's check number 7201?
No, I'm jumping. It's under warrants, legal fees, $25,000.
Okay, so, right now, legal is over?
It is over.
It is over. Okay. The object as a whole is not, but I will be looking to probably move money.
Okay. Then, extra work certified, help is up 150%, 751310, DOE general.
Yeah, so, extra work certified is also over. Most of that's driven by, most, actually, all of the overages driven by special ed. So, if need be, we will cover it through the reserve at year end if we can't cover it elsewhere.
Great.
So, not much, not a real concern with that.
Great. And then tuition, 715610, I think it is, 267% over, but it's like 800K. But I think that's a timing issue.
Yeah, so, we did receive the excess cost on February 29th. It got booked effective February 29th, but it got booked after the fund statement was printed. Okay, so that was 568,000, I believe?
Yeah, 800K over.
Yeah.
That's enough to amend for me. Go ahead. Thank you.
Any questions on the budget transfers for Ron or Joe? Nope, self-explanatory. Okay, Joe, we have a new hire and a retirement?
We do. First, we'd like to welcome Ken Petrofessa as Steady Elementary's new guidance counselor. Kim's replacing Jen Curry, who recently left the district for a position much closer to her home. I know Ashley and the entire team are really excited to have Kim on board. And then, we'd also like to thank Judy Rice for her many years of service to the Monroe School System. Judy was a first-grade teacher at Fon Hallow. We wish her all the best in her retirement.
Okay, any questions for Joe or Ron, further on consent agenda? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Christine, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. We're going to move to the report of the superintendent. Go ahead, Joe.
Ron, did you want to say anything else?
Yeah, well, so, actually, one of the things I was going to mention was the fact that excess cost hadn't been booked, but we addressed that already. And, you know, as far as the legal, which... So, I've been, I've taken a look at health insurance for the current year, and it looks like we are running a surplus. So, I'll be looking to transfer some health insurance money to cover some deficit areas. Right now, we're looking okay. I'm looking to see if we are going to run any kind of surplus for the end of the year.
Can you say that a little bit more enthusiastically?
Well, it's not going to be as, I don't think it's going to be as large of a, you know, surplus or as easy to spike out as last year plus, you know. So, I think special ed is going to be much tighter.
I agree.
I understand.
But that was anticipated, so.
Can I ask all of that?
Sure.
In terms of special ed, is it, like, particular the amount of, like, out placements that are driven costs up?
It's a multitude of everything, but there definitely are. We have kids that we are outplacing due to mental health issues. We have kids in hospitals that we're paying for tutoring, which pay for transportation for kids who come out of a hospital and have to go to an IOP or a PHP, so a multitude of things.
An 11 high-cost students have moved in a year.
In a calendar year, yep.
11?
In a calendar year, yep.
So, again, you know, just to reiterate, we have that reserve to fall back on if needed. And hopefully, that's not the case, but it's there for a reason.
We still have another $108,000 coming back from excess costs we should get the beginning of June. So, that will offset even more. We're going to be close.
Thank you all. Just a really quick report. Friday, we had professional development in the district. I want to thank Mike, the instructor and leaders, the principals, the administrative team for all of their work. There was a lot of good things happening around the district on Friday. I know one of the initiatives that this board put in was, a couple of years ago, was for ruler. And we had, I saw some really good professional development activities being led by our staff about implementing ruler strategies in the classroom. We had teachers designing interdisciplinary units around the April 8th solar eclipse, which will address our curiosity competency in Monroe's vision of the graduate. Teachers spent a lot of time analyzing student data to create instructional opportunities for kids to meet their needs, especially if we get ready for S-Back and GSS and SAT this Thursday. That's all I have.
So, we have classes in blocking areas so they can keep the vision of the graduate? Any other sarcastic questions for the superintendent? Statements? Yes. I stand corrected? No? Okay. Quickly moving on, Mike Crowley, you have a presentation for us on reading?
Yeah, Mike, Kim.
Mike, Kim, yep, come on up.
Joe, I'm going to go that way. Okay. So, I want to thank Mike and Kim for putting this together. I know we've talked about the right-to-read legislation, the reading waiver, the science of reading a lot. And we had some public participation a few weeks ago at this meeting. And I wanted for us to be able to address the science of reading and for the board to have a better understanding of what's going on in the classroom in the Monroe Public Schools today. And I think, you know, the important thing to understand is everybody's on board with the science of reading in terms of, everybody believes that these components to the science of reading, which are listed here, are very important. And we know how important it is for kids to be proficient readers by grade three. There's all kinds of educational indicators after grade three about how kids perform if they're reading on grade level by the end of grade three. So, you know, we have here the science of reading, which is defined with these five areas. I think it was really important. I wanted us to come here. I wanted Mike and Kim to be, to talk about the waiver process a little bit. But more importantly, to address, how do the Monroe Public Schools meet the needs of our kids, meet the science of reading components? Which are those five things up there? Phonemic awareness, I'm going to do my best elementary teacher right now. So, phonemic awareness is, are those the sounds associated with specific letters? So, when you break them down, and Kim, correct me when I just kind of threw this out. It's the most basic building blocks of reading. So, think of cat, k-at. By the way, it's not t. Kim told me you can't say t because it's not, because you have to shorten. So, it's like those very basic building blocks of letter sounds. Phonics is the combination of letters and the sounds that they produce. So, phonics are things like the th makes the sound, sh, ch. So, those are my two big, those are my two big professional development pieces for all of you. Because I think the rest, again, the rest is vocabulary development, reading fluency, obviously, which a kid reads. And the most important one is reading comprehension. It's great if kids can say all the words on a page. If they don't understand what they've read at the end of the page, it means nothing to us. So, these are the five components of the science of reading. And a little bit, I'm going to have, you know, Kim explain how we meet the needs of all the kids in these things. There's one piece, I think, that's missing here that I worry about, and that is the idea of motivation or engagement for kids to read. And one of the things that I get nervous about when, you know, when the state, you know, wants to move... The state did a really weird thing recently with the science of reading. That was they put together, they put out programs for districts to take, which is usually the state takes the lead in developing model curricula and then lets districts develop their own programs. And in this case, they've kind of put out some programs. But one of the things that concerns me about, you know, just focusing on these five things is the idea of motivation and engagement for kids to read. So, I kept using the example this week when I talked to Mike and Kim. If I like, if I like reading about, you know, butterflies, and Dave likes reading about turtles, and Alan likes reading about dolphins, well, I want to get, I want to make sure to get books in my hands about butterflies because I'm going to be a much more engaged reader. So, I just want us to keep that in mind as we look at, you know, the choice that we give to kids and the experience that we give to them through our reading curriculum. But, you know, the big thing is, I want us to focus on, we all believe in the science of reading. Those components are really important for us. And how do we address those components in the Monroe Public Schools? So, Mike's going to start just talking us through the beginning of the waiver process, and then Kim's going to come back to these questions.
Absolutely. The vocalist presentation is Kim, who's really, truly the expert in this early reading, early literacy. But, you know, how did we get here? And I think it's important to sort of figure out, like, why did we actually submit a waiver to begin with? So, in September of 2022, the state came out and they said, "We knew the right-to-read legislation was coming down." And so, they said, "You have a choice. You could either pick one of these six boxed programs," which we knew at the time was going to cost about half a million dollars, you know, or so, "or you can submit a waiver and show us that your program, your curriculum, meets science of reading and are meeting the needs of your students." So, and you have until December 1st to tell us which way you wanted to go with that. So, as a district, we said, "Well, what do we have to look at? We have to look at our data, and we have to look at our programming, and whether we think it's meeting the needs of the kids." So, in September of 2022, this is the data that we had. So, it was from the S-Back data from 2022. You know, our overall literacy, you know, our ELA data from S-Back was that we were second in the Derg, and we were, you know, there's a proficiency for it. And in grade three, we were sixth in the Derg, a little higher than our overall proficiency, a little lower in the Derg. That same year was the year that all three of our elementary schools were schools of distinction for academic growth. And then we went back because, okay, that's the year of, you know, 2022, what was happening before that? And we had to go back to historical data before the pandemic because that was the last time we really took the S-Back. And as you see there, our data showed that we were pretty much meeting the needs of our grade-three students pretty impressively, you know. First in the Derg, second in the Derg, first in the Derg, you know, in the top 15 of the state, mostly in the top 10 of the state. And what was interesting, we looked back in 2016, which was before we even brought TC Workshop into grade three. We were 16th in the Derg and 49th in the state. So, our data was showing us, and we're supposed to always go back to our data, our data was showing us that we were meeting the needs pretty well for our students. And that was just one part because, you know what? Data's one part, but there's also, what else are we doing to sort of build capacity? And Kim's going to talk a little bit about that.
So, we had from, those six programs came out on September 29th of 2022. And like Mike said, we had to let them know by December of 2022, were we buying a big-box program or were we submitting a waiver? So, Mike and I took other points of consideration. One of the first things we did was we went and we listened to program overviews from all six of the big-box programs. And when I say big-box, I mean, it was one publisher that put out, not one, there were six of them, but that they were saying that they were addressing all the areas of the science of reading in this one box. And from what Mike and I heard on Halloween of 2022 when we listened to all the presentations with other colleagues from around the state, you know, the programs were strong in some areas but not in others. So, there was not one box that was going to be perfect. There isn't usually one box that's going to be perfect. And this was certainly the case in this instance. We also were going to need to give up resources that we were using that we were having success with, like our Hegarty Phonemic Awareness Program. We would have had to give that up. And we had data showing that we'd been using that since fall of 2020. And we had data showing us that that was positively impacting students. So, we didn't want to give up something that was working for us to buy something else where we knew it wasn't perfect. And we also knew, as I spoke, when I spoke in November of 2022, we knew what we were using also wasn't perfect, but we knew where it excelled and we knew where we needed supports. And we'd been doing that work. We'd been building teacher capacity and doing curriculum work aligned to those shifts. One resource that we had used was the Text Shifting the Balance. We had used that across District K3. And that book really speaks to shifts that you can make to make your instruction even more science of reading aligned. So, some of the things that we had done, one of the shifts is around aligning students to decodable texts, using decodable texts to support their phonics knowledge as you're teaching phonics skills. So, we were building teacher capacity around using phonics blending assessments to match students with decodables. We were purchasing a lot of decodables to support not only our reading teachers, but our classroom teachers. They had those available in the tier-one classrooms. Another shift speaks to, an old way sort of of teaching high-frequency words was just to have students memorize the words. And so, one of the shifts was align those high-frequency words to where those phonics skills are taught so that when they're learning those phonics skills, they can just learn to read the words. And we had done curriculum work around putting those high-frequency words into our curriculum where we were teaching those phonics skills. That was another shift that we had made. And we had also looked at some Orton-Gillingham approaches, and we had added in trace, copy, cover, that multi-sensorial piece for when students were learning letters and high-frequency words. And those were in our curriculum. So, along with the curriculum shifts and the building teacher capacity that we had done, along with our vision of the graduate competencies, especially like curiosity, along with our data, we made the decision to submit a waiver. So, we let the state know in December of 2022 that we would be submitting a waiver. And we submitted our waiver in February of 2023. While we were waiting for feedback from the state on our waiver, we continued delivering quality instruction. We continued building teacher capacity. It was just this past June that we had 16 educators involved in the OG training, Orton-Gillingham training. Six of those were reading and special ed teachers, 10 were tier-one classroom teachers. And so, we did that work. We're bringing that into district. They're going through their observations right now.
And actually, the OG trainers, when they were here, we used them as a resource for our programming also. We said, "Look at what, look at these shifts that we have made. Are these the sensible shifts to make to move us towards the science of reading?" And to a person, they said, "Yeah, this is, you're doing things in the right order. You're, you know, you're building the capacity to make teachers, you know, appropriately aligned to the science of reading," which was good news for us.
So, this next slide, it talks about our current compendium of resources. And compendium is the key word because when, on December 1st of 2023, when we heard back about the waiver that we submitted in February of 2023, on a Friday night at 8:00, when Joe got his email, letting us know that we had received our transitional waiver, new information came along with that transitional waiver saying that the state had now approved a compendium of resources that districts could choose from. So, we now have a menu of choices. So, before, where we had to buy one big box and make it work for you, now you could choose from some of these resources that are really the best at what they do. So, that was new information as of December 1st, as of this year. And so, one of those resources that they approved was the Hegarty for Phonemic Awareness. So, that's great. It's one that we use. We like it. It's worked for our kids. We've used it since fall of 2020. And how the state set up the menu was each of the areas of the science of reading and then the different resources you can choose. And it's sort of like a pick-your-own menu. So, Hegarty was the phonemic awareness choice. Check. We're there. For fluency, so we have been building classroom libraries for decodables and authentic text. Like I said, we've been purchasing many, many dollars of decodables from various publishers for our classroom libraries. The state's pick for fluency for decodables is Geodes. It's a knowledge-building decodable, and so, that's their pick. So, we're planning to purchase some Geodes for our district in order to get those in the classroom. So, check, we'll meet the fluency piece. I don't know if you remember from my November of 2022 presentation that the other thing that had happened was the state had a new list of approved universal screeners. A universal screen is something that all students take three times a year, and it helps us identify those students that might be at risk or need other supports. We had a committee work last year. We chose Ames Web Plus. Our teachers have been working hard this year to implement that. So, we did our fall implementation, our winter. We're reading that data. We're gearing up for our spring implementation of the Ames Web Plus. So, we're good with the universal screener. For our phonics, we did receive a transitional waiver. We did get a checkmark from the state. We did show our Orton-Gillingham trainers our phonics scope and sequence, and they did agree that we were teaching the right skills in the right places. However, we of a district have decided to make that move to make our phonics even more explicit, systematic, structured, and cumulative than it already is. So, we will be, we are looking at those phonics resources approved from the state on December 1st. They had two choices for us. They've since added two more. So, I do have a team of people working with me, looking at that. And the plan is to make a decision to start doing some professional development with teachers before we leave and to complete that training in the fall so that we can implement new phonics for this coming fall. So, what that all means, what this slide all means, is that the state did grant us that transitional waiver. We have been granted that partial implementation. We are in compliance with the state of Connecticut for that partial implementation for that July 1, 2024 deadline. So, that's good news. The other resources that, the next pieces that we need to put together, so for our vocabulary and our comprehension resources, we do lean on the units of study, the 2023 version. And in third grade for vocabulary, and we do lean on our building vocabulary resource. And so, at this point, we're still continuing our iterative process with the state regarding that comprehension and vocabulary resource while also actively investigating the currently approved compendium resources for vocabulary and comprehension. Again, as of December 1st, we learned that there was a menu of choices and what they were. And even just as soon as two, three weeks ago, Mike and I were on the phone with our reading consultants, hearing presentations from the approved programs. We have samples. They're in my office. So, we're actively investigating these approved resources so we can get to know them to help us with this iterative process and with this next piece that we need to put together. The deadline for full compliance of the Right to Read Act is July 1, 2025. So, we still have some time to figure that out. And in the meantime, we are switching that phonics and building our teacher capacity around that. So, that will be our next immediate focus to really make sure that that can be implemented well in our K3 classrooms. So, what does the daily reading block in K3 look like? It looks like we address all areas of the science of reading every day. Those top pieces that are not, that are on top are areas that we teach outside of that workshop time. So, we have our phonemic awareness, our phonics, and our vocabulary can be taught outside of workshop. And then, our workshop time is 45 minutes and really pulls together the reading comprehension, fluency, and oral language. That's not to say that you can't address the top in the bottom. It's just to say that we have some different resources working together to create a full picture. So, through those research-based methods, we are addressing all areas of the science of reading in our classrooms. And I just want to clear up some misconceptions that may be out there. Teachers are not teaching students to guess at words. We're not using 3Qing. Students who have that letter sound knowledge are taught to look at the letters first. We're not covering up words and asking students to guess. We're not telling students to look at the picture first. We are having students decode the word first. Of course, there's pictures in the book for a reason. It does help tell the story. It does help make meaning out of the text, especially, you know, in the lower grades. So, they do look at the pictures, but they are decoding the words first. And we are not only using one type of text in our classrooms. Teachers have access to, and students have access to leveled text, authentic text, decodable text. And it really depends on the student. It's really where we feel strongly about building teacher capacity because they need to know their students, know what type of books are going to be best for a student at a certain time. So, just to summarize, currently in progress for us this year, that universal screening is continuing. We're choosing new phonics. We're continuing our iterative process with the state. We're continuing to explore those currently approved comprehension and vocabulary resources. And something that we haven't talked about up until now, if we do choose one of those state-approved comprehension and vocabulary resources, that will change our writing instruction as well. It's knowledge building. They're tied together. So, that writer's workshop that showed a big difference in our data when we implemented it would no longer be used in our classrooms. And I think that, you know, we are moving, we're in that iterative process with the state. We're also trying to be very deliberate about decisions that we're making. Something that teachers are worried about is changing and changing again. And that's not something that we want. It's not good for kids, and it's not good for teachers. So, we're being very deliberate about the information that we're gathering and what we're doing in the process in order to make the right decision, do the next right thing, is what I keep saying to Mike. We also have six educators involved in the Right to Read statewide professional learning series that's put on by the Hill for Literacy. So, that is a regular education teacher, a special education teacher, an EL teacher, a reading consultant, myself and Mike. There are 10 full days of professional development throughout the year where we are working on leadership. There's a leadership series. We've talked about assessment frameworks and tiered instruction. There's also afternoon is professional development around those areas of the science of reading. So, we've talked about phonemic awareness and word blending. And that is something that we're involved with at this time to continue our own capacity building. And again, as of right, July 1st, 2024, we do meet compliance with our transitional waiver. We are in compliance with the state of Connecticut. They were quite happy to tell us so in our meeting with them. Our next steps, looking at after the spring, after we choose our phonics and begin building that capacity. So, then, in the fall, we will complete that training for K3 teachers and our new phonics resource. We'll get that implemented. We'll continue our iterative process with the state about that vocabulary comprehension writing resource. We'll continue to unpack that because there does seem to, you know, there's some, their new information seems to come out at different times. So, we're just going to continue to follow our process while we're continuing to deliver quality instruction. And then, we're looking at really late fall/winter of next year. So, if needed, at that point, that's when we would be looking to... So if needed, at that point, that's when we would be looking to pilot some of those new approved resources and complete our compendium of resources because we do plan to be in compliance with the state for that Right to Read legislation by July 1 of 2025.
Thanks.
Questions?
Couple.
Go first.
And the six big boxes that you started off with, or the pieces that you're adding now, pieces that you found in each of those boxes that the state is now saying, oh, you can use these resources?
So that's an interesting question, Dennis, that I also asked the state of Connecticut. Because out of the six boxes that they approved, when you look at the menu of choices, they've chosen two for that vocabulary comprehension resource. And I said, well, you approved these six. And I know other districts have put compendiums together in different ways than you have here on your menu. And I was advised that that would not be the way to go because there wasn't evidence for that combination of resources together, that the ones that they had picked for us did have evidence that they went together. But, because I had, I would like, you know, I would like to know all the choices are so we can investigate all of those choices and make, to make the best decision.
You found deficiencies in the six of the process that you currently do versus what they're doing.
Right. So I think when we listened, you know, you, you would hear a presentation, we did our own research too. You know, I was looking at the various reviews of different boxes, and some were like, this is really great for that vocabulary comprehension part, but the foundational skills aren't. So what some districts did was they just kept what they had for phonics and phonemic awareness, sort of that, we didn't put the rope up at that bottom piece. And they chose what they wanted for the top, and they didn't write a waiver, and they're just going with what they have. The thing is, I believe it's 2027, we're going to go through all of this again. And so Mike and I are really committed to making the right decisions now so that come this whole process again, we're not going through all of this again. We don't want to change now and then have to change again then, so.
Suffice to say, back then, it wasn't a financial decision, you know, half a million is half a million, but it was based on, from what I gather, is really the statistics you saw going up to that in regards to, be a solid B, let's say, in our dirk.
I mean, if, if, I mean, I would say, financial consideration was definitely a consideration. It was not the consideration. You know, we want to put what's best for kids first. And if I need to ask Mike, who needs to ask Joe, who needs to ask all of you for hundreds of thousands of dollars, then we want to be really, really sure that that's the right thing for kids. And talking to my colleagues across the state, some districts who, who did jump quickly are not so thrilled with what they jumped to. And so that was also part of, you know, it was like, well, if they want to jump and go, then we can learn from them too, as they jump and go. But none of those six boxes were perfect. Had there been like the perfect shining star that was strong in everything that it did, then we could have come and asked for that, that funding. But there wasn't one perfect shining star.
Okay, but we're still going to base it on scientific evidence and outcomes, and that's what you're aiming for now.
That is the plan.
Okay.
Yes.
We heard a pretty elegant speaker a couple of weeks back in regards to the lack of phonics. I think I'll sum it up in that round.
So what are you using for phonics now?
So as I said before, we are leaning, right now, we're leaning on those, the TC units of study for phonics. And as I said, we'd been building teacher capacity to bring in those shifts from the science of reading. And our OG trainers told us we had the right skills in the right places. And even though all of that, we had the green light to do all of that, we have decided to choose one of those new phonics programs that's on the state's menu of approved choices so that we can make our phonics even more explicit, systematic.
Yeah, because TC is obviously not on our state approval list.
Well, since the state didn't review any of the resources, they wouldn't be on the approved list.
Well, the research says it's lacking.
For the 2014 version, not the version that we're currently using.
So Hegarty for phonemic awareness, you got a program for fluency, phonics, you're looking at the state, and there's only six? I thought there were seventeen programs, or are those seventeen programs all encompassing?
We started with six. Right, so they started with six. And so when we had to make our decision initially, we only had six big box programs to choose from.
You have seventeen now, right?
Right. But because they're also counting the compendium and the different ways that like they've put it together. But when you look at the menu of choices from the compendium, like Dennis asked, like there were six big box programs to start with, but when you choose off the menu of choices, as of right now, there's two choices for that reading vocabulary piece. There's not the, the six choices. Like I said, like I said when I asked the state, so why, how you approved all six of these, why can I only choose from these two? So that, I just, we still have questions that we're still looking to get answered so that we can choose the best thing for our students.
Well, there's one. Given the basket of choices you have today, if you had to make that decision today, would you make the same decision?
To write a waiver?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And added of seventeen or however they have available now, you're assessing each of those to see if they're appropriate for our programs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So you have to replace what you're doing for phonics?
Well, we didn't have to replace what we're doing for phonics. Sorry, I'm sorry, Chris. We didn't have to replace what we were doing for phonics, but we are, we're choosing to replace what we have for phonics.
Oh, so they approved your phonics program?
So that was part of why we got the transitional waiver.
Okay. But you're going to switch anyway?
This is better.
Because it's better.
Because I think, you know, from what, if we're, as we talk about building capacity, we're all building our own capacity as well. And we had made shifts that had made our program more scientifically based, like I spoke about how we had brought other things into our curriculum. But in, just in knowing what we know now and in learning what we have learned, and, you know, I went to Mike and I said, the next right step here is to make our phonics more explicit, systematic, structured, and cumulative. That's the next right thing for kids. While all of this is being worked out for the reading vocabulary piece, and while new and really, I, I did have a whole timeline up here, and I did write out pages and pages of how this whole waiver process has gone, but it was determined it was maybe a lot of information. It's been a very twisty road.
The slides are probably hidden.
Oh, yeah, the slides are, but it's been a very twisty road with new information coming at all different times. So while we're still working out that vocabulary comprehension resource, it, it just is very clear that we can make our phonics more structured, explicit, systematic, and cumulative, and that that's the next right thing to do.
I'm just surprised, so the state did approve the 2023 units of study phonics?
The state approved the compendium of resources that we sent to them. So in my waiver, that was hundreds of pages long, where I explained the shifts and the things and the other resources that we had in district. They looked at the whole picture and we got, that was part of our transitional waiver.
I think that had been the argument with the, the phonics component of Teachers College was that it was not explicit enough and it was not as systematic enough, so.
And we'd been working to do that. Yeah, we'd been working to do that through curriculum hours and through building, and we had a whole pacing guide and we had split things out.
It might have been a good start, but it's not where you want to end.
And in November, like when we had our meeting with the state in November, like our face-to-face, well, Zoom-to-Zoom face, we talked about the OG training, we talked about, and that was mentioned in the response to the waiver about why we were, you know, approved because of these shifts that we had made too. Which we wouldn't have been able to do if we had to have said in December, or, you know, like.
Taking the box.
Yeah. And so, you know, a lot of the things that have come out in the last year or so is the concerns about people just depending upon a box and not building teacher capacity and the whole pedagogy piece of it. And so we've really gone down the road with paying for this training and spending time with the right, with the Hill for Literacy to really build, you know, teaching, because that's what's going to make readers not a box.
Will you then have the Hill for Literacy come in like you were having, like consultants?
So if we have money set aside for science of reading training next year, we have not yet earmarked, so we're making decisions about how to, how we're going to be using that. So we, we did, we did have a one-to-one meeting with the state in November where we got to sit and discuss, we had twenty minutes, half hour, twenty minutes, to, to really speak to our waiver, where we did talk to them too about the changes we'd put in place even since we submitted the waiver. So things like, they were thrilled to hear about the Ames Web Plus that we had in place and the OG training that we had done and the purchase of more decodables and, 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 and. So they appreciated the work that we were doing for kids and building capacity for teachers. And then all of that went into consideration when assigning our waiver status as well.
So it looks like you're taking a best of breed approach for different programs. And the only thing you're lacking right now is the scientific outcome of mixing those to see what the outcomes are.
Yeah, well, the state with their compendiums, they're saying like, these, if you put these together in this way, well, you'll be good. So, but so.
But the state saying it good isn't the same as you guys saying it's good and seeing any outcomes of our students.
It's very well researched.
Yeah.
It's like fifty-something years over.
I'd have to be thriving for mediocrity.
There's like, like Chrissy said, there's astronomical amount of research going back, what, forty years or more?
And there is for the skills. And my question for the state was, how do we know, like, so let's talk more about this compendium that you've put together and how we know that there's evidence from these particular resources working together that will mean it's the best for, for our students.
So the only two components you have not yet identified, well, three are, like I said, the phonics, the vocabulary, and the comprehension, which is the work you're doing now. And you have to be fully implemented by July of 2025?
Well, we, I don't know that we have to be fully implemented. We have to be able to tell them what we're using.
Got it. So you have a little bit of time.
Right.
Yeah, because that's pretty massive undertaking.
Yeah, it is. And, you know, elementary teachers teach all the subjects. And so, right, we really want to, we're, as I said, Ames Web's our big work this year. And that is, that's been our big work this year. Because, you know, you're learning a new, you're learning a universal screen. It's, it's done in a different way than they're used to, building that capacity in terms of the doing the actual testing of students and then reading that data. So that's been new learning for us. And, and then if we do phonics, my action plan, between the end of this year and the beginning of next year, that's big work for us. And then if we're piloting that, that's a lot of big work. And we have teachers who, who work really hard and who are open to learning new things. It can't all be new at the same time.
And I think a big lift for the administrators in the room that I'm looking at, and why we need that second administrator, Mon Hall, and now I'm looking at you, is that the fidelity of implementation piece is going to be huge, and that's a lot for the administration.
It is. And we're already, that's also part of my action plan, just in terms of how we can do that. So we are lucky to have our reading consultants and our reading team who also have helped in the past be an extra set of hands to get in and model and show and do alongside teachers. When we brought in Hegarty, it was the fall of 2020. I don't know if you all have taught kindergarten in the first couple of days of school, but in those first few weeks, the reading team was in doing the Hegarty in the kindergarten classrooms so that the teachers could focus on the kids until the teachers were ready. And it didn't take long, but just, so we were in doing the Hegarty, just modeling and doing, working alongside teachers, so.
In the middle of a pandemic.
And with masks on, doing phonemic awareness. Yes.
Phonics with masks?
With masks, yeah.
For phonemic awareness, I should say.
Yes. So, so we, we, you know, like we always do, we'll use our, it's teamwork. We use our teamwork, we use our people, and, and we make things work.
Thank you.
So in terms of deciding which program you're going to go with, that's going to be a decision made by you and Mike, correct? Or is it going to be a roomful of people and they're going to discuss?
For which resource? Are we talking about the reading vocabulary piece?
Uh, phonics piece.
So for the phonics piece, our Right to Read literacy team of that special ed teacher, regular ed teacher, reading consultant, myself, Mike, and the EL, do I say EL? We're working together alongside the consultants to, to work on that phonics piece. I also have already elicited feedback from the teachers on, because some of them came from other districts and they've used different things. So I gathered their feedback. We pulled out the important, thinking the wrong word, themes, themes, from all of that research from the teachers, just what's important to them. And obviously, what's important to us first is student progress. That is number one, student progress. But then after that, what's important to you as teachers in terms of this new phonics resource? So that team is working on this really so that we can make a decision and begin the professional development this spring to lighten the load for the fall. And then for that reading comprehension, that vocabulary and comprehension resource, that's where we'll have teams of teachers piloting and doing, roomful of people, like a whole, a whole nine yards.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I'm just wondering, what else could our staff have been doing if the state would leave us alone and just address failing districts? But it's a whole nother, whole nother issue. Thank you very much, Joe. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all your work.
Seriously, thank Ken and Mike.
We had a lot of questions on this, so thank you very much.
Thanks to Ken and Mike. Thank you. For working hard on the waiver.
Is, okay, moving right along. We have no unfinished business, so we're going to go to new business. Board, as we discussed, every single year, the superintendent gives us a letter, and this is to the board from the superintendent about contract extension, March 11th, 2024. Dear Dave, I am requesting an extension of my contract for an additional year as provided in my employment agreement under section five, subsection C. This would extend my contract through June 30th, 2027. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Sincerely, Joe Cobb, the superintendent. Joe, the board met, as you know, in executive session, so if you can send me that, the notes you had given me, and then I'll add our notes on, we'll, we'll sit down one day. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's contract commencing July 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2027? Christine, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Hey, hearing none, I'm going to.
Thanks, Joe.
I'm going to tell you. You sure you don't want to change that date?
Yeah. I'm sorry, any, any further discussion, any further comments? Thank you, Joe, for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much.
I shouldn't even say thank you.
Yeah. We're going to move to item number B under new business, healthy food certification. And Joe's going to walk us through this because it gets a little picky, but he has his suggestions, which I think we should follow. I'll leave it at that.
So we have, we have, really, what we're going to have here is two motions. There's three on here. But the first motion is to certify that all of our foods offered for sale to students in the schools are, are not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards. We're going to, on this, you have to vote, yea or nay, on the first one. You're likely going to want to vote nay because we have Masac is not on the national school lunch program, it's off-program, so therefore it does not need to meet the requirements of the, of the healthy food certification. So if you vote nay on that, which I anticipate that's what we've done every other year, we can skip number two because it's not applicable if you vote no on the first one. And then on the third one, it's the option to vote for beverage exemptions for all board of beds. It's likely and traditionally been held that we vote yea on that one because that allows us to then sell beverages after school hours, at sporting events, at plays and concerts and things of that nature. So the, it's, it's a no skipping yes.
And, and Joe, just so the board understands, these are state motions, right? These are mandated by.
Correct. Correct. It's mandated by state, we have to vote on this every year.
Okay. Okay, so on the, it's the, the first motion under number one, right?
Yep.
Okay, your recommendation is that we vote no on this one?
Correct.
Okay, but we have to make the motion seconded and then take your recommendation or not, right?
Yes.
Okay. So can I have a draft motion pursuant to Connecticut, Connecticut general statute, section 10, 215F, the Monroe Public Schools Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising[1720.83] activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups. Can I have that motion by Dennis? Can I have it seconded by Christine? Any discussion? The superintendent's recommendation on this one is a no? Looks like you have a question?
Yeah, discussion.
Yep, discussion, go ahead.
We have a new food service crew in here. What's the feedback been on them before we change anything that, or we're not changing anything? Feedback?
Whitsons, are they in line with this?
Yes, they were, they were in line with what we're doing currently, right? So, yeah.
Sheila, yeah?
Well, we had a meeting with some students at the high school. We had two freshmen, two sophomores, two juniors, two seniors to give us some feedback on the food service program up here. There were some things that the students said that were great, that were suggestions that we gave back. Whitsons was at the meeting as well. We also have done a survey out to staff to try and get some more feedback on it. Again, there were some other suggestions in there that we shared with Whitsons and they were well received, so we're.
Nothing that would change the scope of this question, but just wanted to get general feedback on how, how we're doing with our change, so.
There's a new Whitsons manager?
There's a new manager and we've already seen changes from meeting with him that one day to discuss things and some of those changes happen the next day, so.
Nice. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? None? Any against? Unanimously against? Okay, so that means we will skip number two and go to number three, the optional vote for beverage exemptions for all BOEs.